Good, good. Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna call it all order, the March ninth, twenty twenty-three, school board meeting. We're gonna start with our flag salute.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the heavens, and on earth as one.
We're gonna move on to item one B, roll call.
Mr. Kern. Mr. Reimers.
President.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Hipoff.
Here.
Mr. Post.
Here.
Mr. Ayusu.
Here.
Mrs. Rochino.
Here.
Mr. Shermer.
Here.
Thank you. Prior to this meeting, there was an executive session on an EHR matter, and just wanna notify everyone, there is, this meeting is being recorded by the board secretary, as well as the eye in the sky behind you. And moving on to item two A is approval of minutes, again, motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to superintendent's report, Dr. Harner.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all, especially all of our, our students. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the Pennsylvania two thousand and twenty-three civics exam, and then give you all an update. As you may remember, I know all the board members do, the P- PA legislature passed a bill in the summer of twenty eighteen that requires students to take a civics assessment between grade seven and, and twelve. You can read more about it online, about what the law says and all that, since it's right there as a PA House bill, and it was approved by the governor. Locally, the Quakertown School Board of Directors asked the administration to begin an assessment to implement it right away, as the bill was passed in twenty eighteen. In the twenty eighteen nineteen school year, and we've been utilizing the U.S. Naturalization Citizenship Test to meet this requirement. Now, what's really, really cool about this is our students are assessed on what most Americans out there are alleged to don't know. And it's really, it's great is how well our teachers teach us in the middle school, so how well they've done. So tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about it. I've asked Mr. Chris Gorlitz, our social studies teacher at the middle school, who has been helping us each year recognize academic excellence about the test, and then later on, we'll be calling up our students who are, who maxed the test out this year.
Chris?
Yeah, it's a test that I, I will be honest, when it first came about, we, social studies teachers in the middle school didn't wanna have it in eighth grade, because a lot of what they're going to be assessed on, they haven't gotten yet. But with the amount of tests they take up in the high school, it was decided we should do it in eighth grade. And every year we've been doing it, we've seen a, a higher and higher number of students who achieve a thirty, like, they're getting questions on the eighties, Vietnam, World War One, World War Two, we don't even touch that in eighth grade. So for them to score a one hundred percent, which is a thirty out of thirty on this, is really, really impressive. And this year, it's one of the biggest numbers that we've had, it's definitely the biggest number I've had personally, and, and this group, and I've studied to the ones who are here a million times, is as good a group I've had in my twenty-eight years of teaching. They are just outstanding kids, top to bottom, and I'm really, really proud of them, and everybody here should be too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. So I would ask that the students, as their names are called, if they would come up individually, so we can recognize them and, and stay up here, because then we'll have a good photo for parents to take, and we'll take it and put it out there on our website and social media site. Samuel D. Bernard Darty. Okay. Luca Doric. Luca? You're here, okay? Carly Gredita. Greda, okay? Jacob Gires. This is Brody. Tell me, how do you pronounce your last name, sir? Kylie Kelly. William Kumari. Alexandria Laco.
Wow, we got a favorite here from Mr. Gorlitz here, congratulations.
Elijah Lowry. Aiden Myers. Aiden, good.
Where's our police hand, nice sweatshirt.
Yeah, I know, everyone's on the board's gonna like your sweatshirt.
Gavin Rogers. Good job, Gavin. Nathan Steinberg. Aaron Tuck. Aaron, okay. Chase Williams. Did I miss somebody? Well, congratulations to you all.
If it's a mom or dad, he wants to come up or both.
You guys are gonna have to take a picture, you'd like each other.
Gotta tighten up.
Squeeze in.
Good, Gary? All the parents good? Congratulations, everybody. Now, if you want some excitement, you can stick around for the rest of the board meeting, but we normally take a break after we recognize students, if you wanna leave and go do homework, 'cause it's Thursday night.
I, I think they should require any elected person to take and pass the civics exam before we even are allowed here. I doubt I'd beat those kids.
Mr. Gorlitz.
Sir, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harner. So moving on to the agenda, we have standing committee reports, item four A, facilities committee, Mr. Shermer.
I'll turn my mic on. So tonight's facilities committee meeting, we had several items to go through. The first thing we discussed was the UGI agreement. Essentially, what that is, is UGI is replacing a line that borders nighting property. It's an agreement that allows them to go on the property, replace the gas line. And it's gonna be done when school's out, so there'll be really no effect and no cost to the district. So we approved that. We talked about Memorial Park Baseball Field. We made a, a commitment some time ago to fund half of the renovations of Memorial Park Baseball Field. We, up to a max of five hundred thousand dollars. And Quakertown Borough is gonna have an agreement and an invoice for Quakertown at their March meeting. So what we agreed to do is, once we get the agreement, Facilities Committee is gonna review the agreement and then have Mr. Garten review the agreement as well. If that's okay, it'll be sent to the board for board, board approval. One thing that we did ask for was a split invoice of two hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand. And there's no energy on the, on the, the bill yet, is that, am I right on, so there's no energy there. We discussed the lawn and landscaping RFP, so we're opening that again. The Facilities Committee has put a outsourced limit of two hundred and fifty thousand for the lawn and landscaping. And I'm gonna need some help from Mr. Garten later in the meeting. We're gonna go out, go out for the bids. If the bids exceed two hundred and fifty thousand, we're gonna bring it in, in-house, and we're gonna need approval to buy lawn equipment, should that, should those bids exceed two hundred and fifty thousand. So it's some kind of a contingent approval for spending.
You're gonna have to reject the bids if they come in over your number.
Right.
But I'm sure that you're gonna begin already now to look at for sources of the equipment, either on CoStar or whatever.
Yep, we have that, and that, it's a known source. Rob, what's the name of the, the group? I should know it, but.
Trembauer's is where I'm gonna buy equipment from, an AR CoStar vendor.
So, so that's where that is. We also discussed and approved for board approval that, an update to the district work order tracking software. Rob says their software hasn't been updated for between ten and fifteen years, so it's past due. We have a, a period of time where we're going to exercise it, at a cost of about twenty-four hundred dollars. And if it works out, there'll be a, it's a seven thousand dollar a year subscription in software, but user-friendly, and so far, it looks, looks positive, so. We then discussed the high school acoustic study. The acoustic study came back, and the high school Performing Arts Center is too dead for music performances. They've made some recommendations, Rob's gonna go out and get some quotes for the work that needs to be done, and we'll review that further. We talked, Jamie from Dewey Engineering was in. We talked about the sixth grade center baseball field. From a number standpoint, we don't have very many updates, a couple of smaller line items came in, such as the, the dugouts and the bathroom slash concession stands. A lot of the com, approval work is, is done. We have to do a, a wetlands study, but we're really waiting for the larger numbers as far as construction work, lighting, and, and he'll be back with an update later next month. Talked about, the last thing we talked about was the Connie Mack Field, and for a baseball field this year. The Connie Mack Field needs, needs some work, and is asking for a contribution of seven thousand dollars too, which is half the cost of just the materials. They have volunteers that'll complete the work, and we approved that to go ahead, 'cause we needed a baseball field for this year, so. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Shermer. Moving on to the next committee report, policy, Mr. Post.
Thank you, Mr. Ayusu. We had a meeting tonight, we approved, or moved, recommended to move eleven policies forward for first reading. I believe there's some that are up for second reading, or are they passed already? Okay, so it's just up not eleven for first reading. That's the end of our report.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Moving on to item five, public comment on agenda item topics.
David O'Donnell.
David O'Donnell, Richland Township. I'll keep this short, 'cause I, this looks like a light agenda, and I hope it's a short meeting tonight. I was looking at the committee meeting dates, and it looks like on the twenty-third, where the board meeting had been canceled, now the committee meetings have also been canceled for that day. Earlier in a meeting, a couple weeks back, there were some complaint about the committee meetings not having enough time to discuss everything they need, so I'm just, I'm curious why those committee meetings were canceled for that date. Hoping that somebody might be able to speak to that at some point tonight. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, David.
Jason Gerhart.
Jason Gerhart, Quakertown Borough, they've kinda stole all of my thunder there, but, you know, I, I just find it interesting where topics fall in committee. It's been going on for, you know, months, years. QE does not seem like it's an educational problem, so why is it starting in educa, education committee? It seems like a facility problem. So that should be a facilities issue, then maybe a finance, how to correct those facility issues, and then education. Seems like a kind of an agenda, I don't know where the agenda's coming from, but education does not seem where that conversation should be started. I don't know if it's there because of who's in that committee or not. Also, they, you know, we canceled a meeting in, in two weeks, but it seems like there's pretty much district business that should be done. You know, we got budgets coming up, budget season, we got the QE, we got baseball. You know, there, there's district business that needs to be done, and it shouldn't be canceled, because control can't happen, and personal agendas and personal schedules, because you can still have a meeting with a quorum, just 'cause, look, John's not here tonight, he didn't call in, meeting's still going on. That's why there's other people that can run the meeting. So just because one or two people can't make it, doesn't mean a meeting shouldn't be, should be canceled. When we were doing redistricting through COVID, for five months, we met almost every Wednesday besides around the holidays. We didn't cancel any meetings, we added meetings. We met over forty times to come up with our recommendation, and probably could've taken more time. So I hope these other conversations that are starting, you're meeting many, many times. It shouldn't be a board or administration decision, it should be a community decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any other public comments? Good. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is the president's report, item number six, and just wanted to highlight a lot of the stuff that the board's been doing these days. We've had very active discussions for the superintendent search, spending a lot of time and effort to find the best fit for our schools here. And as a result of the confidential nature of it, we, we can't name the candidates, but we did have very productive stakeholder group sessions with the community, as well as professional staff, ACT ninety-three staff, and support staff here with the candidates, so that was very good feedback that everyone gave us, we're very happy to see the engagement of our stakeholders, and we did take that into consideration for our search. We should have, hopefully, an announcement shortly, relevant in March, hopefully, if all goes well, for who that candidate is, and we'll announce what will be made publicly. We did move on to other items, I had the pleasure of visiting many of our schools since we last met as a board. Couple of my fellow school director, board members have also attended the high school pancake breakfast, which was a, a great hit. Great, great to see the high school players serving pancakes, a nice annual event, do recommend anyone who hasn't attended to attend it whenever it comes up. Did attend a beautiful sixth grade center award ceremony by Dr. Bubser. It was great to see the kids happy and getting awards and great recognition there. You know, did visit the high school field that we're currently talking about after that significant rainstorm, so I was out in the fields on Saturday morning after that rain event, and looking at how mud and saturated of a swamp we're, we're working within. So it's definitely needed to get a new field for our school, so I know that's an important topic that we've been discussing at facilities level. And just in general, you know, relevant to meetings, we've had separate meetings on budget workshops, we did have a budget workshop meeting, very productive discussions there, and we have another budget workshop meeting coming up. If you didn't have the opportunity to attend that, I do recommend watching that video. There are some key elements in there, relevant to future potential increases that are still being discussed, and hopefully be ironed out, so we can move forward with our budget for next year. We do have advocacy day that we're gonna be meeting with state legislators on April eighteenth, virtually. And also, I'm actually making a trip out to Harrisburg in May to meet with some legislators when they're in session. So there has been some delay in getting legislation passed as a result of the politics going on right now in Harrisburg, but it's very important, because there's lots of stuff before Harrisburg, relevant to schools, that we need to get in front of. I'd rather be in front of it versus waiting for them to tell us, hey, we have to do this, this, and this. I'd rather actually have us have a say before we get a package that we have to move forward with at the local level. So I think overall, I do wanna appreciate all the board members for their hard work and dedication. They've been putting in a lot of hours, I feel I've seen a lot of our board members almost every other day, and do appreciate all their great work and effort in helping our schools. So that's all I have for the president's report, thank you. And then moving on to items for board action, we have item seven A, settlement offer for government entity claims against J U U L Labs, Incorporated, Jewel Labs. Kind of a motion to approve the consideration of proposed settlement offer of Jewel Labs litigation.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Hey, in discussion?
Can we get a summary, right?
Yes. Can we get a summary of that?
The, some members of the board may have been around when we suggested that you participate in the litigation, and it relates to the advertising associated with sort of advocating to kids to use vape products. And if you've noticed, there's a huge number of plaintiffs, and as a result of that, the, this district is receiving eighty thousand dollars unencumbered. However, you'll have to pay lead counsel out in California some, a third of that, but you, the net result will be unencumbered, use it for wherever you wanna use it for. So we're recommending you settle it, because obviously, you don't have the resources to go alone at this point.
Well, you can't represent us in a, in a case, if you will?
Not me, it's the professional experts you're gonna need to hire.
Ah.
All right, thank you for that summary. Any other discussions? All right, can I have, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Very good. So next is the fiscal consent agenda, I was reading through the fiscal consent agenda, wanna remove one item, which is eight B, and if we could approve the others, I'm not sure if I need to motion the board to remove it, or just approve everything but eight B?
You can just approve everything.
You make a motion to approve everything except for that. Mr. Garten, to his point, do we, since eight B is on the agenda, but there's some question about it, can we not take action on that, or do we have to take action, yea or nay?
You can table it.
Yeah, all right. I'm gonna motion a table eight B, which is approve agreement with Michael Fallon for two high school presentations. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Are you tabling this for a discussion of vote later, or just tabling it, like, taking it off?
I would like to just table it.
We table it, we have to take it up next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're gonna table it, it's scheduled for March seventeenth, so you'll have to just kinda.
Then we need an up or down vote.
Yeah, we need an up or down vote here for that. You can, you can vote separately on that, but.
Yeah, let's vote separately on it.
Okay.
I mean, so you have to withdraw.
You should withdraw the table motion in the second, so you're not having that pending.
Um, I'll withdraw my motion.
No, I'll withdraw the second.
Okay.
Could I have a motion to approve A, C, eight, A, C, and D?
You can make the motion.
Yeah.
That's what I'm making the motion.
Right.
Can I make the motion instead of have?
I'll, I'll second that.
Good. And I just wanna, so everyone at home, if they don't have the agenda in front of them, I just wanna read out each one of those that. So Mr. Spear had motion to approve, a motion to approve eight A, eight C, and eight D on the fiscal agenda. All right, any discussions on eight A, eight B, I'm sorry, eight C, or eight D on the fiscal consent agenda?
The only question I have is, has a Benner G one presentation been something that has been done in the past in the district, or?
I don't believe so, sir, it's been done at the IU and other school districts around us.
No, I actually watched samples of both of the presentations on our agenda tonight, so, you know, I, I just wanted to know if we've done it before, that's all.
I don't believe so, sir.
Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes for eight A, eight C, and eight D.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve eight B.
I'll second.
All right, any discussions?
I, I again saw a sample of this presentation too. I didn't have any issues with it, was this person presented in the past to our high school? Seems like he does a lot more high schools.
Yeah, I just.
I, I believe this the first time.
Okay.
Yeah. I was just reading some of the material that he's presenting, and, you know, I understand what he's presenting, it has been controversial in certain realms. I mean, I understand what he's presenting. It has been controversial in certain realms. Just, you know, how it's coming across in certain cases and some of the information is being conveyed. And if we have a presentation of this nature, I didn't know of how the parents are going to react and if they have the opportunity to opt out or... Because it is next week, if I recall, on the agenda. And that's, the only objection I have is, a lot of items in here, I'm not sure how it relates to reading, writing and math. Is he going to be talking about reading, writing and math?
I, I doubt any of these motivational speakers will be talking about reading, writing or math. If you've ever been to an assembly in high school, they rarely talk about reading, writing or math.
So he, so what he, what he... This guy's controversial and really can't deny that. He characterizes minorities and people can be offended, frankly. And seeing one of his presentations, a couple of the people that he characterized, I was offended. And maybe I took it the wrong way, maybe that's me. But my preference is not to have the gentleman in.
So I, I didn't watch it like Mr. Spear did, I just read about the guy. And I didn't see anything in there that... So can you guys give examples of some of the, like, why, you're saying he's controversial, but I didn't see anything in his write-up?
Discussion at a couple of places, but if you're characterizing somebody with a physical disability like cerebral palsy or, you know, I understand that they need to, they need to be sensitive to it, but the method by which that he pervades his meth, his message is what I have a problem with. Again, that could be me, but, you know, I, there's, I feel that there's much better ways to make the message.
All I saw were sort of feedback from people who saw the presentation that said, you know, great things about what they saw. And they ranged from, I think the youngest was about an eighth grade student. So like I said, I, that's what I had to go on, so I don't have that frame of reference to say...
Can the, can the administration talk to this gentleman? And, or maybe not talk to him, talk to us about this presentation?
I can't, I cannot. Can anybody on the team hear? Because Matt's not here tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate that it was posted so we could review it over the weekend. So I had time to review it and I felt similar. Mr. Shermer, some of the topics that he's going to discuss is controversial, even though I know what he's trying to do, the gentleman that's going to present. But given our, it's, it seems to be outside our typical curriculum and it would be somewhat of a parent choice whether or not a parent, a student participates in this. And I don't believe we're giving the, the parents a choice to select whether or not they should have their child attend a presentation of this.
Aren't high school assemblies optional? They're not mandatory, they're not. You sign up to go to them, correct? They don't force all students to, to watch these. They're voluntary.
I would anticipate that this would be during the lunch pride period.
Yeah.
Which would be an optional.
Also, even if it was, would the students have the ability to opt out if that was their choice?
Yes, sir.
Or parent choice, as with every other presentation?
Yes, with almost everything we do, parents can ask to opt out.
So I don't know where that...
I just don't see how parents got notification of this event. I didn't see any notification.
Do you have a high school student?
No, I know of people that have a high school student that aren't aware that this is happening, so.
Well, I'm just, you know, wondering why you think it's your right to decide?
Not my right, it's the collective board's.
Wait, it's a vote. It's not his right?
But it's an...
He's putting it to a vote.
It's an optional, it's an optional assembly.
All right, call it a question?
We caused enough of our own problems, we don't need to bring some in. That's, that's, you know, basically. And yeah, I was offended. I was offended.
What, never mind.
So I'll call it a question. Do a roll call vote on this?
Wait, you're calling to question procedure you guys keep using. Maybe Mr. Garten can elaborate on this. Is, we have not been using that correctly, right?
What correctly?
Well, when someone just wants to stop conversation, they just say call to question and that, they think that that instantly stops any conversation. That is not the correct Roberts rule.
Immediate conversation, but that can, that can end debate thereafter if enough people want to call the question.
But it has to be a vote. When you call the question, you have to vote to end that discussion then.
Vote to call the question.
You can't just call the question.
All right, okay. So vote to call the question.
Well, now the debate's over, let's just vote on the thing.
Ready to vote? Good, okay.
I mean, I have a book of parliamentary procedure if you want.
Sure. I realize we've got a lot of fun banner going on right now. I have a high school student. I was not aware that this was happening. However, he is a high school student. If he chooses to go to this assembly and it is his choice and it is optional, it is not my place, in my opinion, to stand in his way. I do not believe he is attending or plans to attend, but if he did, I would be okay with that as well. If there is an optional piece of this and we are talking about students who are primarily adults, I do not believe that it is our place to necessarily shut down something like this completely. So I have said my piece and now I will be quiet.
Thank you. Mr. Reshino?
I would disagree in one, one aspect. Certainly you would admit that there are topics, and I'm not going to give an example because there's no point, but there are topics that would be unacceptable in any educational setting. You could come up with some, I'm not going to waste everybody's time doing so.
I agree with that.
Okay, so the question then becomes whether or not this presentation rises to that level.
I don't think we have enough information to make that determination, frankly. We're talking about things that are inappropriate or that we don't feel are correct, but nobody wants to just say what it is or you don't actually know what it is.
Well, I did watch the whole presentation.
If someone would like to actually speak to specifics, I am happy to listen to them. Because to your point, Mr. Jackson, there might be some specific criteria or parts of this presentation that are not appropriate. But if we don't actually know what those are, I don't understand how we can vote on that out of basically pure ignorance.
Or vote against it.
How are we expected to approve it?
Exactly.
No, the question to, to Mr. Shermer's point is like, you're saying we don't know enough about it to prohibit it from being in there. Mr. Shermer's saying, I don't know enough about it to allow it to come in.
Right.
Well, you don't know enough about the other presentation either, but you just approved that. I'm sure no one watched that presentation. I watched them both.
Actually, I did.
And I can tell you, I didn't have an issue with either one. So, I mean, if, if you have a specific part of this presentation, the actual, you don't know me until you know me presentation, but Chuck, that was not easy to find. You know, I had to find like a cell phone video of somebody. It's not posted anywhere online.
It's not easy to find and, but...
What particular part did you have a problem with other than doing a Google search and saying, is this bad? You know, that's what I'm, I'm waiting for that conversation.
What I'm saying is, I'm not disagreeing with what he's trying to communicate. I'm disagreeing with the method by which he communicates it. It's very simple. And, and he has been controversial. And we call, again, my point is, we caused enough of our own problems, we don't need to invite men.
If you just approve this...
And that's the way it is. You can argue all you want.
Okay.
That's the way I'm going to, that's the way I'm going to go. Win or lose.
Any other discussions? Good. All right. Start with a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Reimers?
Point of clarification, what is a yes, but what is a no?
Motion on the tables to approve, Mr. Spear's motion was to approve it.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Hipoff?
No.
Mr. Post?
No.
Mr. Ayusu?
No.
Mrs. Reshino?
Yes.
Mr. Shermer?
No.
All right, motion doesn't pass. So moving on to the next item on the agenda. Is the facilities agenda. We have item 9A, which is lawn and landscaping RFP. Motion to approve the lawn and landscaping RFP.
Well, I think this, this one needs that clarification. I guess Chuck can...
So there, we approve to go out for RFP and to accept the, the bids.
Up to a certain point.
If they are under the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold. If the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold is exceeded, we need to approve the purchase of lawn equipment up to a value of fifty thousand dollars, is that what?
Sixty, sixty-five.
Sixty thousand dollars. So we can move on.
Let's not cut it short. I mean, if Rob said it's sixty or sixty-five, I'd rather say sixty-five.
Okay.
I'd rather not get hung up on the five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars, so.
So how do we make that concise?
Would approve issuing the RFP, but state if the responses to the RFP exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're going to reject, you're rejecting the RFP. You're going to authorize the administration to acquire up to sixty-five thousand dollars in required lawn equipment.
Correct.
What he said.
And an additional two FTEs.
Well, that's part of your sixty-five thousand dollars though.
No, that's, that's for equipment.
But that's for, the RF, well, well...
You're going to have to hire those people anyway on the agenda going...
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that, get that on the agenda.
Listed here, aren't they?
That'll be kicked up to the, the board for approval next month.
Human resource consent agenda is later on.
Yeah.
Would you like to read the motion?
Motion, motion to approve the facilities department hiring two additional FTEs to absorb the landscaping responsibilities if the, if the RFP exceeds two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, that's not it.
No, okay.
The FTEs is not part of the motion.
Okay.
So motion is to approve issuing the RFP with the understanding that if the responses exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that the, the, will be rejected and furthermore authorize the administration to acquire up to sixty-five thousand dollars in lawn-related equipment.
And hire two FTEs.
That's separate.
And separate.
Okay. So, all right.
That's totally a human resources consent agenda sometime down the road.
All right, so I'm going to need some help with this.
You and I, oh wait, you do them simultaneously, so we can fix it tomorrow morning, but you can...
We can motion to approve as discussed by our solicitor. Does everyone have? Good. Any discussions? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, who was the, I need who was the first and who was the second?
You started it, Chuck seconded it.
Chuck seconded.
Glenn, Chuck.
So you were first?
Glenn, Chuck, yeah.
All right, so we're moving on to the item 10, our human resource consent agenda. We have item 10A, professional staff listed.
Do you remember?
All right, so we're moving on to the item 10, our human resource consent agenda. We have item 10A, professional staff listed. Some leave, some employment, some retirements. We have item 10B, confidential staff resignation and a new employment. Looks like replacing that individual leaving. And item number 10C, support staff. Some transfers, some employments. Item 10D is unit pay, that's listed here for some athletics and activities and clubs. All right, can I get a motion to adopt the above resolution and approve the personnel items as recommended?
Motion made.
I'll second.
Mr. Jackson and Mr. Reimers? Any discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Good. Good. All right, moving on to item 11 is information items, health and safety plan review. For information only, it's attached there for anyone to review on board docs.
Can I get a clarification, if Mr. Garten may know this? How long are we required to maintain a health and safety plan?
You are required to maintain it now until the expiration of the period to spend your federal work, your estimate, so...
End of 2024.
Thank you.
The question I have is, do, do we need to vote to approve it or is this adequate enough just to review it?
Change it or you want to vote?
Okay, so, no, I, I know we have to periodically review as part of the, the contract, or contract mandate from the state.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Spear, moving on to item 11B is a statement of financial form, interest forms that are due April 28th. All board members need to submit it to our board secretary here. Keep in mind, they have to be done hand signatures, no electronic copies, so, good. Moving on, there's information item on item C, which is the Levy bus staffing update. I don't know if the administration wants to talk how Levy is doing these days. Good, okay. And then moving on to board comment, new business, item 12, any new business, any board members?
I'd like to give David and Jason a response, if I may, to their comments. So yeah, we, we did cancel those meetings. So the one meeting that was referred to was, is what I referred to as, we always get cut short on our meetings, we don't have enough time. That is the facilities meeting, because we're dealing with the baseball field and a bunch of other projects that are going on. That meeting was not canceled, that was not scheduled for that night. What was canceled was the finance meeting. I canceled the finance meeting with some collaboration. That was canceled. We have a workshop, the budget workshop. Jason said, hey, there's a lot of stuff going on, budget workshop, things of that nature. We have a workshop meeting, yeah, meeting scheduled for the 30th. So I'm hoping you, you all are there for that. Mentioned that, hey, we have a lot of items to discuss on the board. I think this board's done a great job as far as having two meetings a month. Previously it was one meeting a month. So by canceling one meeting to have basically another meeting about QE, yeah, dedicated, we have a dedicated meeting to QE, we have a dedicated meeting to the budget. So yeah, and this is our third of, we have just three budget, three budget workshops. I was hoping for a fourth, but no, I'm just kidding. So I just wanted to respond to the comments that while we did cancel meetings, there are, there are reasons. That's all. So appreciate you guys commenting.
To, to reply to that though, Mr. Hipoff, yours was not the only meeting where people were complaining about the time and being cut off. I believe Mr. Post was also in that situation with the policy committee because he had, what do we have, seven minutes of that?
That was my fault.
We did a good job today, though.
Which we could have done last time.
Right, we should have flip flopped the meetings.
So if they ran, if they ran short in that meeting... So, if they ran, if they ran short in that meeting, which facilities ran over, which we apologized for, of course, then I would assume that probably would have gone on the policy committee meeting tonight, which ended in 20 minutes.
Not even. But my other observation is, when Mr. Spear asked for a meeting to be postponed because he was attending his daughter's concert, I believe it was, you guys, the, the rest of this board gave him a whole lot of, of grief about, "Oh, we can't miss a, or change a meeting just because one person's not there." And then all of a sudden, and, and Chris only asked if we could do that. Glenn came in and said, "We're canceling a meeting." That was our, that was part of the issue. He just said, "Oh, we're going to cancel it." To my knowledge, he never talked to me about it, and I don't believe he's talked to Mr. Spear about it. He just came in, sat down, and said, "We're canceling the meeting." So, he dictated that. So, I mean, yes, you know, we do a lot of, of stuff, but it feels very top-heavy coming from this situation because now the, the president sat down and said, "We're just going to cancel a meeting." And then turn around and say, "Well, we're going to have another one a week later instead," which, as it turned out, it was just because he wasn't going to be able to make that meeting. So, you know, you can talk about how Jason made his point, but, you know, call it for what it is.
True.
And I call it that both those meetings were approved to be canceled by this board.
Well, the education and curriculum was the other one.
But by this board, as a majority.
Education and curriculum was the, the second meeting that, that would be canceled that night. And, you know, I would say, I did have some questions, and I kind of went over them with Dr. Hoffman before this meeting. I just asked her the questions, because we're not going to have an education and curriculum for so long, about tech school enrollment and whether or not we were using our full, full enrollment, you know, allotment here. And, and I did find out that we weren't, so I wanted to make sure that that got done because the tech school enrollment needs to be done in a timely manner, so the tech school can get those students enrolled. So, now that we're not doing that, the next education and curriculum meeting's not until that second meeting in April, which is really, really, I mean, maybe even too late for that. So...
Unfortunately, I can't speak to that, and, and John's not here.
So, I think at the end of the day, we're spending a lot of time, as your board, on lots of hours for superintendent search. I did mention that we are spending a lot of hours, volunteer hours, on superintendent search, nights and weekends. I did comment on that, why we wanted one board meeting instead of two. You know, we, we're very obvious, we're passionate about what we do here. I'm glad that we're committed to help our community and have these separate meetings, the budget workshop meeting, a special meeting for QE. Those are hot topics. You know, we're dedicating our time to talk about it with our community. So, all very good discussions. Thank you. Moving on to item 13, dates for board member calendars that have been updated. And then moving on to general public comment. Item 14, any general public comment?
David O'Donnell, Richland Township. Sorry, I'm a little shocked by what I witnessed earlier on. Never thought that I'd see actual acts of censorship coming from this board. You're talking about an assembly at a high school level. These are children that can opt in, opt out, and can be challenged with topics that we may find a little off-putting. For only two people up here to admit that they watched anything having to do with it, and one of them being in support of the assembly and the other against, for, totally respect your opinions there. But then for the other four people who didn't witness it, didn't see it, to vote against it, I'm, I'm curious, beyond censorship, what possible reason could you have to vote against that assembly? It's, it's disgusting.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Lyons, Quakertown Borough. To echo Mr. O'Donnell here, I'm very surprised at your action related to that assembly. I'm going to assume you have a process in place for all assemblies and that we're not going to start canceling things because we don't like the way that people speak. Now, of course, you caught my curiosity when you immediately said you were going to cancel this assembly, so I, of course, did a little quick research. I'm Mr. Fowler, on the web as mykee, M-Y-K-E-E-F-O-W-L-I-N dot com, whose mission is to create an atmosphere of worldwide inclusion, not just tolerance towards all people. If we're going to get down to you don't like the way somebody presents themselves, that's a really slippery slope to go down as far as to why you're making decisions on assemblies. We all have our opinions, Chuck. I agree with you. You got an opinion, you're duly elected, that's your right. Absolutely. I'm just saying it's a slippery slope to, to, to go down. Now, I'm going to quote one of my favorite people who I've, I will admit, never read one of his books. I got to wait for this text to get in my way. Stephen King recently, I'm going to say recently because I can't read the date on it, tweeted, "Hey, kids, it's your old buddy Stephen King telling you," I'm going to paraphrase this to not offend, "that if they ban a book in your school, hall year, I'll say 'but' to the nearest bookstore or library ASAP and find out what they don't want you to read." I'm going to encourage everybody, and I'm sure you're encouraging them as well. This action is just going to make people go find this guy. And they're going to do it independently, and they're going to do the ones that want to do it. And maybe some kids will have their minds open. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other public comments? Good, all right. Moving on to adjournment, motion to adjourn the meeting. Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.